Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the May 20th Pitt County Planning Board Meeting tonight, and we'd like to welcome those that are in the audience and those that are watching by TV. At this time, we'll have the roll call.
Fay Barefoot.
Present.
Frank Bradham.
Here.
Jacob Cox.
Lyman Hardy.
Here.
Thomas Harris.
Here.
Stephen Laffridge.
Here.
Clay Malloy.
Here.
Matt Nobles.
Here.
And Madam Chair, we received notice that Kenneth Ross, Wanda Harrington, and William Wooton will not be in attendance.
All right, thank you so much.
But what you have here, you do have a quorum.
Thank you. All right. At this time, would you all stand? Let's have the prayer and the pledge by Ste- Stephen, please?
Let's pray. God, thank you for this glorious day, beautiful weather. Thank you, Lord, that spring is on its way. Thank you, Lord, for our state, for all the government elected officials, Lord, that serve, Lord, and we pray that you direct their paths and their steps, direct our path and our steps tonight as we deliberate, that it would be in a timely and unified fashion for the best of this city. And we thank you. We pray these things, Lord, in your name, Jesus. Amen. This pledge allegiance to the flag. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have your minutes in front of you for the February 20th meeting. Is there any corrections or additions?
Pushing way up, really.
All in favor, raise your right hand. At this time, I'll turn it over to Matt Spreitzer for the public hearing that we will be having on the subdivision ordinance.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Again, we've got scheduled a public hearing for subdivision ordinance amendment dealing with street maintenance guarantees. And a lot of this is a review from the last couple of meetings. Per the Pitt County subdivision ordinance, new streets are to be built and maintained by the developer until they're turned over to DOT. NC DOT must be petitioned to adopt the streets, and the streets must be in a serviceable condition before they will take them over for maintenance. We've experienced a lot of problems with maintenance enforcement after the project is done, so to speak, basically due to unclear enforcement measures. Recent amendments to the ordinance specified street maintenance standards and what we'll call street maintenance violations. And at the planning board's direction, we've presented options for maintenance enforcement measures at the January meeting and provided you guys draft language at last month's February meeting. The proposed language up for a public hearing tonight will require developers to make guarantees so that Pitt County can remedy road maintenance violations that are not corrected by the developer. And the proposed language gives clear understanding that we will use the guarantees that they provide if they fail to maintain the streets, or Pitt County will use the guarantee. The proposed language will require the subdivider to post some form of financial guarantee, things like irrevocable letters of credit, cash and escrow, or some type of bond. The guarantee must be approved by the county engineer and county attorney. And when DOT has officially adopted the roads and assumed maintenance, the guarantee will be released back to the developer. Planning staff proposed to add the following new section to the subdivision ordinance. It's on the next few slides. I'm not going to read it tonight unless you guys would like me to. It's a fairly lengthy section. And I can read it if you would like, but otherwise, I'll leave it on the screen for a few seconds and let you guys read it if you need to. The first section, Section 148, is road maintenance guarantee, or the proposed section is 148, Road Maintenance Guaranties. It goes over the basics. Paragraph A, financial guarantees. It lays out how the guarantees are to be structured and what kind of percentage of the total cost is to be used in figuring out the amount of the guarantee. Number two is acceptable forms. Again, it's the cash escrows, letters of credit, bonds. And Item 3 deals with how we're to certify and release the bonds once DOT has taken the streets over. Item B is maintenance. What's covered under the guarantee is basically from right-of-way to right-of-way, roadside ditches, curb and gutter, pavement, base course. Item C goes into maintenance violations, how we determine that there are maintenance violations, and how we go about using the bond if we have to. Other than that, I'll take any questions you have, or we can turn it over to the public hearing.
Do we have any questions, comments?
We figured out what the financial guarantee's going to be?
Financial guarantee, like how they're going to structure it, or the percentage, or...
Percentage and how it would be handled.
As the language is written right now, it's 25% of the total cost of the road. And there are a few different ways they can put that 25% up. Again, you know, they can get a bond. Private companies do guarantees. Cash escrows, where the developer basically writes the county a check, and we hold that in an account until the road's turned over to DOT. There's another form called irrevocable letter of credit, where the bank provides the county of saying that they'll back up, you know, the developer's commitment. And those forms are very similar to what we already have in the subdivision ordinance, but that's for guarantees that are relating to finishing the subdivision. As it stands now, a developer can final plaid a subdivision and not finish out the construction, but he's got to provide a surety in that form already to finish out the subdivision. And the language in the maintenance guarantees is very similar to the performance section.
For a long term.
Right. And it's an indefinite term.
I think that's going to probably be a problem.
Matt, let me ask you. It says estimated cost. Who would declare the estimate, what the estimate would be?
Typically, we're provided a cost estimate by the developer's project manager, engineering firm, and then the county engineer verifies that that's a suitable amount. That's how we do it now with the performance bonds.
Matt, I'm kind of lost. If a guy goes in and builds a subdivision and builds that road like he's supposed to.
Yes, sir.
He still has to put up that bond?
Yes, sir, and it's for the ongoing maintenance of the road. Because what's happened is, in some of these subdivisions that were built 10 years ago, but nobody ever petitioned DOT to take them over, the roads are falling apart, and the developers have not been maintaining the roads. And DOT will not adopt those streets until those roads are brought up to a serviceable condition. They've got potholes, and the ditches need to be cleaned out. The driveway pipes weren't set right.
So if they build that subdivision according to the standards that's set for them, and once they sell the lots, they can't even turn around and petition the state to take over the roads?
That is what we want them to do. And if they can get the lots sold and built out quick enough, that it's, there's not a lot of maintenance to be done on the roads. But it's just when they don't ever petition, either they forgot, they didn't do it for one reason or another, 10 years later, you're stuck with a road that's starting to show signs of wear. And DOT won't adopt a street that doesn't have houses on it.
And Mr. Hardy, one reason, we've got Woody Jarvis back with us tonight, District 2 engineer here, and he can tell you more, probably as a, just a rehash of what we talked about when he was here several months ago. What are the requirements? There are residency requirements. This is not like in a city situation where the city will be maintaining the road. They'll actually take the road over as soon as it's constructed, if it's built to standard. It's that lag time. And in this economy now, it can be many years longer than what we used to deal with before those residency requirements are met. So we do have Mr. Jarvis here again, if you'd like to hear more about that. But the monies that we're talking about tonight are specifically for maintenance guarantees for that interim period of time, whether it's two years, 10 years, 15 years. At this rate, the economy's kind of slowed down, and there may be certain requirements that just simply aren't met on certain road segments for a longer period of time. And this is what this guarantee's set up for, to ensure that when they do meet the residency requirements and other requirements of DOT, the roads can be taken over for maintenance.
Yes, sir.
Also, the initial design engineer who designs the subdivision, all of his specifications are up to DOT standards, are approved by DOT standards.
That's correct.
So as long as everything's maintained, it should...
Stay in standard and be adopted. That's correct. And the engineer provides us with the final plat with his seal on it stating the roads have been built to those standards.
So nothing right now in this is going to stop them from just dropping it all on homeowners associations if that's what they want to do to get out of this?
Well...
Is anything said they can't?
We're writing into the language that they can turn it over to a homeowners association for maintenance, but that's really already an option for them.
Yeah, that's what they're going to do instead of putting up this money, I guarantee you.
And currently, just to make sure you understand that point, that isn't already an option for long-term private maintenance.
Not normally, then.
So if the developer is still looking towards a publicly maintained road at some point in the future, the only option right now is for the developer to maintain it up until the time DOT takes it over. Homeowners associations come into play for privately maintained streets. Those are in perpetuity. So that's the only option we have right now.
So the homeowners association couldn't appeal to have it taken in by the state, taken over by the state?
They, I won't say that they can't. Per our subdivision ordinance, the maintenance...
Can't.
Yeah, the maintenance aspect needs right now to be only with the developer, not with the homeowners association for these proposed public streets.
It would be good to let Mr. Jarvis just review the requirements.
I think I can help us a little bit with some of the things we're talking about. A lot of what we've run into in the last several years with road additions are kind of a manifestation of a lot of different factors. The economy has been slow. Lots have been selling slower. Home construction has been slower. The developers are holding on to these subdivisions a lot longer than they have. And if you couple that in some places, over the last four or five years, we've taken some subdivisions on the system that are approaching 30 years old. And one of the triggers that gets everybody interested in us taking the subdivision over is when it begins to need a lot of work. Until it needs paving, or ditching, or has problems, it really doesn't occur that there is an ongoing maintenance need on any road, subdivisions included. So when we get to the point of crisis, if you want to be a little on the dramatic side, or need on the realistic side, that's when it becomes imperative to hand the subdivision over to the highway department. And from our point of view, we're pretty much underfunded to take care of what we've got already. So to rush out and bureaucratically volunteer to provide these repairs in places that we don't already have full obligation for is another challenge to a strained budget that we're wrestling with on a daily basis. So to try to be as fair as we can and try to be as unobtrusive to the development industry and the county and the homeowners as we can, we're already allowing, when we say a road is built to DOT standards, just about every subdivision plan is built to our minimum standards to begin with. A lot of these are doing well to go 10 years without maintenance. It's not that anybody's done a bad job, but we're everybody's trying to get the most for their money. And when we get called to look at one in trouble, it's kind of like going to a car lot. None of us are going to go buy a car with four flat tires. We don't want to buy a subdivision that we're going to get calls on as soon as we put the stop signs and the road numbers up. So that's pretty much the simple version of where we're at in the process. We've tried to make our rules such that they don't hurt people. The minimum standards, for instance. As far as certifying that the road meets DOT standards, we sign the plat saying that the design meets DOT standards. We accept the developer's engineer's opinion and seal that it was built to DOT standards. We don't make that decision because we don't want this to be a political process. We want this to be a professional process as much as it can be. So getting it from an enterprise for profit to the point that the state assumes responsibility has got to be a pretty well-thought-out and professional process. And we get some criticism for punch lists, but our whole goal is, when we're asked to look at a subdivision, I send somebody to do a punch list, which is fix the potholes, clean out the ditch, open the pipes, remove the brick pillars on the mailboxes, and do the things that put it in a position that we can take it in with everything else we have. So that's what the highway department is working from and working toward. And we get a lot of cooperation from you and James and his staff. And we want to help in this process. We don't want to make it worse than it is. So with that, if you've got a question, I'll try to answer.
Another question. If the developer wants to, wants it to be a private road, continue as a private road, I know in many subdivisions we've worked in, they're still private roads. Is that still an option for a developer?
It is an option. It's, has had different views from different people. As long as it starts out and the buyers are aware that this is going to be a private road, and they're going to have maintenance expenses in perpetuity, it works out pretty good. But if it starts out as a private road and provisions aren't made to take up a collection on a regular basis to perform maintenance, and it gets in bad shape, it usually winds up coming to us as a request to what do we need to do to get you to take this? And when those come to us, we have to verify that it's a public right-of-way. If it's not a public right-of-way, it has to become one. And once it becomes a public right-of-way, then we look at the maintenance features and determine what's got to happen to bring it up to our standards. So that's a short version of that process. But you can cross the lines, and we're certainly amiable and cooperative either way. But usually, we recommend that it be set up as a public right-of-way so that we would have the opportunity to take it over in the future.
Woody, let me ask. We got to this situation because we've got, I don't know, several hundred thousands, I don't know, miles, or thousands of yards, or whatever, of streets in Pitt County that need maintenance, and they are not at DOT standards anymore. Otherwise, we wouldn't even be discussing this. But we've got some property owners that are being harmed because developers either died or declared bankruptcy, or just walked away from a project. Regretfully, because of those instances, we are looking at this. If a developer doesn't do what we're proposing, then he has an option to make it a private HOA-type development. And at some point in time, what I'm hearing you say, the HOA can petition the state, they would have to bring it up to whatever your standards are, but...
The choice on that...
Am I understanding this right?
The choice on that happens when it is in a conceptual form. That's one of the first things a developer decides, is whether to make it a public right-of-way or whether to have it as private. Because as soon as he starts selling lots to people expecting this to be a private gated community, then it has an obligation to the folks that buy it that way to keep it that way, unless they decide different. So the process of going through it is a legal change that just about everybody who bought a lot thinking they were getting a private lot in a gated community has to look up and say, well, yeah, it'd be better if this was public, and I'm willing to sign and agree to this. So there's a lot of personal choice involved in it, but the first choice is the developer.
And if they make that choice for a private road, are they then required to put that 25%?
James can address that.
Let's back all the way up. He's giving you his ideas about how the homeowners associations would work if you're looking at a proposed public road. We see that totally differently per our subdivision regulations. So up front, Mr. Bradham has Bradham Acres, and he's got Bradham Lane going in. He knows it's going to be a private road. Before that subdivision plat is recorded, we're going to require, the county will require, per the subdivision regs, that there be a homeowners association developed, have restrictive covenants, and we're going to be looking for one section and one section in particular to say explicitly that the homeowners association and its members are required to maintain the streets. So that's put aside. Matt doesn't deal with it that much later. Not that we won't get some calls about the private roads, but we know that there is a mechanism set up initially to handle the maintenance there. The proposed public roads, I'm not doubting that there's some other agreements that might happen later on, but when we see the plan and when it's recorded as a final plat, it has a statement that the developer, the subdivider, is responsible for maintenance. So we keep it neat and clean on our side. It's not that things don't get a little bit muddled after the fact, but early on, that distinction's made, publicly maintain, developer, privately maintain, homeowners association.
And I think as long as, you know, they have those options, I mean, that's still an option to them, then, you know, I mean...
And Woody's exactly right. We've had homeowners, because of some issue with the developer, may have, may be deceased or something else, they may petition DOT themselves for the roads to be taken over. So there's a lot of different options when we get to that stage. And right now, we keep it clean at the onset, though, either private or public.
Woody?
Yes, sir.
Would the state take over gated community roads?
No, sir. No, sir. The first test that we have in a road addition is what kind of right-of-way is it. It's got to be dedicated public right-of-way for us to touch it. And along that same line, we like to be in a lot of things, but we really do try to avoid being in the development business. So when we look at taking a subdivision over, it's important to us that we're not taking a subdivision full of lots that are still owned by a developer. They need to be individually owned, and they need to be public. I mean, that's what goes along with being public right-of-way. If we were in a position that we took them as soon as they're platted, we would actually kind of be looking like we were in the development business, too. And that's not a good place for us to be. The implications and perceptions of that would really be, could be nasty.
Okay. I brought it up at last meeting. I know a lot of time we're out of luck, and you're saying different individuals own lots, okay? These subdivisions were done 30 years ago. All right. Where do we go to start the petition? Is there a form that we start at? And who do we send it to to try to get the state to go out there and take a look and see about taking over the roads?
We'll look at anything with a petition, and you can call our office and talk to either me or Gene Pittman that works for me. And we will research what we are able to do and give you an answer on that.
All right.
We have places that we can do, and we, certain conditions, we are not going to be able to do.
Like I said, I live out in Northwest Takers Drive, and that's one of the worst roads. And there's a lot north of the river and everywhere. But, you know, Mr. Tommy knows, I mean, we're basically out of luck. And we're catching the brunt of it, and they're catching the brunt of it as a subdivision, building subdivision. Why should, you know, we're building new roads right now and making them put money in an escrow camp. So they're being held accountable for something that some people for 30 years should have done. And I just don't, you know, understand this, you know. I mean, y'all make it so long, so much red tape, where y'all try not to. And, I mean, folks beg and beg. And about putting this money up, I just think that it's double penalization everywhere.
The programs that we have are fairly well-cut and dry. We have a program for subdivisions that were platted before August of 1975 that allows us to take on something that needs a little bit of fixing up. But anything that was platted after that point has to be up to DOT standards. And if it was not laid out to DOT standards when it was built, we're probably not going to be able to take it.
So we're out of luck, Dan.
Well, I think I've looked at that in the past, Clay, but I don't remember the details well enough to tell you. You're out of luck.
Okay, if you get a chance, I'll call you. But Northwest Takers, right there off Old River Road. We would love to see what, we can get some help out there, and a lot of other places, not just Northford River, all over the county. I mean, we talk about being underfunded. You walk by, you see one man working and three folks holding a shovel for the state. And we're underfunded?
Yes, sir, we are. We really are.
Yeah. Well, we've got one man working, three holding a shovel. How are we ever going to go, you know? I mean, that's the way I feel about it. You know, we keep talking about funds, funds, funds. The lottery's supposed to take care of education, and we're not getting nowhere.
I understand your frustration. I share it with you.
Well, you know, that's all we ask. You know, come out, take a look, tell us what we need to do. Give us the forms we need to fill out to try to get it done. That's all we ask.
And it's really going to depend on what we start with. If it was not laid out as a... If it was not laid out as a DOT-approved subdivision, it will end at that point.
So like, school buses going down the road, hitting potholes, throw a young'un, a young'un gets hurt, we're just out of luck on a school bus.
I don't control the school buses.
But it looks like somehow we pay property tax, but, all right, we work, we pay state tax, federal tax, and we just need some help in a lot of these home, subdivision, that's all we ask.
I understand. And, and, you know, I think one of the neat things about us and taxes is we are funded out of gasoline taxes, and we're funded when you trade cars, but we're not funded from property taxes, we're not funded from income taxes, and we're not funded from a lot of the taxes that people are accustomed to paying. And, and that's probably one of the problems that we're, as a highway department, going to have to have some public support from. As we stand right now, we have some of the highest gasoline taxes in the country.
Anywhere, yeah.
We also have about the largest road system anywhere. Our neighboring states only take care of the interstates and the primary routes. We're one of the few states that even considers taking on subdivisions and secondary roads. Most of the surrounding states take up property taxes to pay for secondary roads. If that were the case in North Carolina, it would probably elevate our property taxes by 10 to 20 cents on, from the level it is now.
Well, you know, just, we need to figure out a way for these 20, 30 years ago, people need to, need help because they can't afford to pay a road, pay a road out there. And, I mean, you call, and nobody never goes out, I mean, or comes back to us, but we really need some help.
Any more questions for Mr. Jarvis at this time?
I've got one more to be part of him and part of him. A developer can choose when he's in development stage of this property to have it state-approved, built to state standards. There's nothing to keep him after that from turning it over to a homeowner's association until they accept it, is it?
Correct.
That's what he's going to do instead of putting up this $250,000. That's what I want.
So, somebody will have to put up that, that bond.
Would the homeowner's association have to put it up? Are they responsible for what I was...
It's, it is, and this is written into the subdivision ordinance. It is the developer's responsibility to maintain those roads.
Unless it's the homeowner's association is responsible for it. He put that restrictive covenant, then he's out of it.
Okay. Again, when we first get these plans in, we carry the process, it's either public or private. Private homeowners association, public, it's going to be the developer. The developer, as we're currently drafting this language, would be responsible for the maintenance and also for that financial guarantee, that maintenance guarantee. Homeowners association could come on at a later date. Right now, we're still considering it as a public street and the responsibility of the developer.
Can he declare it a private street and build it to the state standards, and they take it over later?
Not unless the lawyer changes it to public.
Well, they could change that.
At that point, it would be up to the people that have bought the lot.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's what's going to happen.
And, and in most situations where we, it's hard to get five people to agree to do it one way, and when you get more than that, it's even harder.
Well, it, it won't be if the homeowner's association don't want to maintain the roads. That's going to be a fairly simple decision.
Surprisingly, it would seem that way, but in reality, it's usually still a challenge with the ones that we have worked with. Because it doesn't, we, we, it usually doesn't take but one. One of the things that we talk to most of our folks on road additions has to be a unanimous decision, or it, it really turns into litigation. And we're really not trying to bargain for more litigation.
Oh, wow.
So, yeah, it's a possibility.
That's why I was asking, was it possible?
But it's not likely.
Well, the, the proposed ordinance here, if I'm reading it correctly, says the financial guarantee shall stipulate the roads and associated improvements will be maintained in such time as adopted by NCDOT or maintained by an approved HOA. So the, the purpose of this is to protect the county from any expense where the commissioners are being petitioned, fix my street. Counties are not in the street business. And I guess living in a, the person lives in a municipal that pays municipal taxes, you know, and part of my taxes go to my street maintenance. It's, if you build in the county, you're already, from a financial perspective, you've already got some benefit. You don't have the expenses that a municipal is going to play a part in. And so, soon, from a fairness perspective, it seems like that, if, if it's not right for a county to have this expense, and the developer's going to walk away from the expense, who's protecting the person that bought the lot? So I think that's what we're trying to do.
Yes, sir. And, and this is to protect future developments. Mr. Moy kind of hit it on developments that, you know, were 30 years old. This is, you know, when, once this gets adopted, this is for subdivisions in the future. And it's, it's not going to be a burden on the developments that are already out there. I, I don't know if that was quite clear.
Well, I'm just, you know, I, I still would like to go back for the ones that, like Mr. Harris would say, we're just out of luck and what we need to do.
You're going to have to get your homeowner's association together and start paying fees and to fix it.
Any other questions for, before we go to the public hearing?
And, Madam Chair, one, one other point. We did send this draft language out to the development community, some of the developers that have, that have done recent developments, and also the project management engineering firms, and let them know that, that this was being proposed. We did get comment from one developer, Bill Clark Holmes of Greenville.
And we have that in our package.
Right, correct.
Okay. Are we ready for the public hearing then?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I'd like to open it up for the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience to speak, would like to speak? You'd have three minutes. Would you like for you to state your name?
My name is Tom Blevins, and I reside in Indian Wells Subdivision, which is out near Chicago School. I happen to live on one of these roads that was put in 10 years ago. I've had DOT out twice to look at it. Right now, I can't even get a contractor to come out and look at it because I guess there's a hex on my subdivision from past years. But we, as the homeowners out there, we don't have a homeowners association. We had a developer that passed away, so we were kind of left, as I say, holding the bag. Right now, the gaps are getting wider and the holes are getting deeper, but we're still trying to blaze on. I think 25% of the cost of putting a road in isn't enough. I originally lived in Indiana, where home of the terrible roads are, and they were just falling apart after three or four years, kind of like the one I've got right now. Contractor puts $200,000 in to put a road in, 25% is going to be $50,000. Three years later, costs $100,000, $150,000 to fix the road, he's going to walk away. I would suggest putting a bond in, it's whatever the cost of the road is. Make sure they get some skin in the game. Who's going to watch them for three or four years and make sure the road's maintained? Is the thing that's currently written. You know? I don't, I don't think the planning commission, anybody wants to get in the watchdog business. But I just feel that 25% is just not enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? Madam Chair, do we have anybody, I mean, Madam Clark, do we have anybody that signed up to speak on the list?
Let me make sure.
Okay. Okay, at this time, if we have no one else to speak, I'd like to close the public hearing at this time. All right.
Madam Chair, we recommend that you forward a recommendation on, about the amendment language to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration.
Okay. All right, you've heard the request. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We second it.
All right. All in favor, raise your right hand. Those that oppose, please raise your hand.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you.
Um, next item up for, on your agenda tonight is Wellington West Preliminary Plat. It's a new major subdivision, the first one we've had in, in over a year. Subdivision is located on Portertown Road, east of its intersection with Ralph's Road. It's in the Chicago Township, 20 lots and 23.9 acres. Here's an aerial view of the proposed site area, outlined in blue. As you can see right now, it's, it's a farm field, and it sits between the Brandy Creek subdivision and the Wellington Ridge subdivision off of Portertown Road. Here is a map showing the zoning and aerial, aerial view. The area is primarily zone rural residential, and there's a couple of small commercial parcels in the area. The site is not within the 100-year floodplain, it's zone rural residential. Electricity is provided by GUC, and water is to be provided by Eastern Pines Water Corporation. Conditions and requirements for the plan, solar erosion, solar erosion and sedimentation control and construction plan is required. E9111 addressing says we need to rename West Wind Drive. It's a duplicate of a street already in Pitt County. And the site will need the installation of a BMP or a payment to the ecosystem enhancement program, BMP stormwater pond, or, or something similar. GUC needs an electric easement beginning at Portertown Road across the front of lots one through 10. And environmental health has said that there is drain tile on the property, farm drain tile, and there needs to be an easement over the drain tile to protect it for maintenance and whatnot. All, and all septic systems must remain 10 feet away from existing drain tile. Here's some photographs of the site. This is at the Portertown Road entrance. As you can see, the area is mainly a, a field with neighborhood on either side of it. This is facing west, looking at the Brandy Creek subdivision. And this is facing north, back towards Eastern Pines Road. This is facing west, and this site does have a, a proposed stub street. It, it is proposed to connect to Wellington Ridge subdivision on Hardaway Drive. And it's facing east. And this is facing south, back towards the entrance at Portertown Road. This is, this is Portertown, facing, uh, this is heading away from Greenville. And this is Portertown, again, heading back towards the city. Technical review committee recommends conditional approval of the plan. And I'll take any questions you have, and we also have sent notices to adjacent property owners in, in Wellington Ridge and Brandy Creek, and I think we have some citizens here that would like to make some comments.
Ma'am, this is in the ETJ, right? This is in...
No, this is actually in the county jurisdiction. Yes, it's, it's close to the ETJ, it's in the county jurisdiction.
Any other comments from the board or questions before we have the public comments?
If approved, this is too early to fall under the guidelines that we just allowed to go to.
This development would fall under the regs that are, as they are now.
As they are now.
Yes, that's correct.
And my understanding is that Wellington, next door, is already one with issues.
Um, I, I'm not certain, Mr. Cox. I mean, we can back it up and see some pictures that, you know, they're... Yeah, it looks like they...
That looked bad.
I don't, I can't tell if that's patch or maybe some paint on the pavement.
I can't either, but...
But I, and I, I can't say for certain if that, if that street's been adopted or not.
As one that, years ago, I was always saying we needed to have a stub, be able to, so we have deadened streets all over this county. Theoretically, if we, this thing passes, it will be under, but let's say that it's, it's already passed.
Yes, sir.
And we're getting ready to adopt this, and we're stubbing to an unapproved set of streets. What, do I even want to go there yet?
Um, and this may be a question for Mr. Jarvis, but I, I would assume DOT is going to main, maintain up to where the, the, the unadopted street starts. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, we, we would really promote the idea of developing with crossconnections and trying to assume that it would all be on the state system one day, so...
Yes, sir.
I think it's important for us to know, since we're trying to nip some of this stuff before it happens, I think it's important for us to know the condition of the subdivision next door that it's tying into, and whether or not the state has already adopted those roads, before we can really make an informed decision on it. I hate to put any development off.
Sure.
As bad as we need it in this area.
And I, I can, I can speak, I, I was out there earlier this week in Wellington Ridge. The roads out there are not what I would call poor condition by any means. They're, they're certainly not new anymore, but they're not in, they're not in poor shape out there.
Are there any residents here from Wellington West who maybe could testify? Okay, so we'll ask y'all.
All right.
Okay, we'll recognize those that would like to speak in at this time for public comments and so on.
Okay.
You need to state your name, and you have three minutes to... Okay?
My name is Donald Hardy. I own a piece of property in Wellington Ridge, just lot number 18, which is towards the back of the subdivision. And the only comment that I would really like to make is that when the, with the stub road, we have a lot of kids in our, in our neighborhood that ride bikes up and down the street, and they're playing, and they're running from house to house. And, you know, some of us out there are really concerned that with the addition of 20 lots and a stub road connecting to it, that it will make it a little bit less safe for their younger kids to, you know, play as they're accustomed to playing. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, John.
Hi, my name is Toni Spencer. This week marks my one year out in Wellington Ridge. I have the same concern that, that Donald does. I live at the, in the very first house when you come into Wellington Ridge. I have two boys ages nine and 12, and one of the draws for us moving into Wellington Ridge was that it was one road in, one road out. I never thought that it was a possibility because I don't do planning and development. I had no idea that we could ever be connected to another subdivision. And I was in Cherry Oaks for 15 years before we moved into Wellington Ridge. Not once did I ever let my children get out on the streets of Cherry Oaks and ride a bike, just because of the traffic. So my kids are ecstatic to be in Wellington Ridge because I, I can't tell you how many children are out there. There's tons of children out in that, I mean, almost everybody has small children. And our kids, as soon as they get home from school, they hit the street, they're on their bikes, they're on their ripsticks, they're on their skateboards, up and down. And our concern is that the Hardaway Place is going to open up more traffic to come in and out of our subdivision. And we would like, you know, we would love to see that not, that stub road not connect to Wellington West, just for the safety of our kids, and so they can enjoy the same pleasures that I did as a child, riding my bike and up and down the street when we got home from school every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience that would like to speak, have any comments?
Um, Madam Chair, I, I would just like to point out that the connect to, the stub-out street connectivity issue is written into the subdivision ordinance. We do like for developers to connect where possible. And, and the, the idea is not to create a thoroughfare or a thoroughfare where they're going to, they're going to try, folks are going to try and get from one... going to, they're going to try, folks are going to try and get from one, one major street to the other. This is just to connect neighborhoods. Um, and, and the way these subdivisions are and the way Wellington West will be, will be laid out, folks aren't going to duck off Portertown Road to go up, you know, West Wind Drive and cut over on Hardaway and come back, come right back out to Portertown. They wouldn't be gaining anything. It just, it, it adds the ability for a school bus to go in there and turn around for, um, emergency vehicles to get in there, um, ano, another way if the primary entrance is blocked. Um, and it just, it'll, it connects neighborhoods, but it's not going to provide a, a way for, uh, you know, folks to, to make a thoroughfare out of it.
Okay, all right. Okay, at this time, do we have, uh, any more comments from, uh, the board or questions?
My only concern is that we're just starting one more subdivision without any ordinances to protect the streets. And it's just, um, I hate to delay it. But without any kind of decision from the county commissioners, what they decide to do, I don't know if the, if it's even proper that we ask to postpone it for thirty days.
This is one we approved a couple of years, a few years back and the time ran out on it, is just actually trying to renew it to what it was.
Yes, sir. And, uh, then I, it's West Wind or, uh, Wellington West was approved in oh eight. Um, and they actually are reducing the number of lots in this version of the plan than they had when the one that was previously approved in oh eight.
Would, do I have a motion to?
I'm going to approve.
Second. Second. Okay, all in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Those opposed? Anybody opposed? All right, thank you. All right, at this time, we recognize Mr. Rhodes for informational items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few informational items for your attention tonight. Um, one that you probably read about in the paper, there's been a lot of discussion of late concerning, uh, bringing some interstate service to eastern North Carolina on the east side of I ninety-five. So, um, there's been a resolution adopted recently by the commissioners. I was going to give you a map to show you exactly what we're talking about here. Um, what we're looking at is gotten a lot of different names of sorts of late, but one that's kind of stuck is Eastern NC Interstate Highway one ninety-five or I ninety-five, I should say, I one ninety-five. And it creates basically a, a box of sorts using the four corners of Wilson, Greenville, Kinston, and Goldsboro. And there are a lot of different road improvements that are already going into place, one being as part of this, the southwest bypass of Greenville. And then it would connect also with Harvey Parkway, the bypass of Goldsboro that's currently underway. Seven ninety-five, most of you might have traveled already, the, um, length of road between Wilson and Goldsboro, that is currently already in, at interstate standards. So, this is again, uh, proposal to try to bring more economic development here to the east side and, uh, is gaining some traction, especially when DOT and DOT officials hear that there's a concerted effort from several different, um, counties and municipalities in the area. So, uh, that, you've probably seen, been several resolutions of sorts that have been adopted of late, and the commissioners did adopt theirs a couple of weeks ago. Hurricane Irene, um, most of you are familiar with the storm that hit about a year and a half ago. The county has put in, uh, a letter of intent for several different properties that, to be bought out. And might have heard of the buyout property that was associated with Hurricane Floyd back in nineteen ninety-nine. We had some hundred properties in the county's jurisdiction that were bought out at that time. We put a letter of intent in for a similar program for Hurricane Irene for about fifteen properties. Only two of those properties meet, met the, uh, criteria, so, but we are moving forward. The, uh, commissioners did give us authorization to move forward in securing funding for those two properties. And we'll, uh, we'll be able to, quite an elaborate process, but over the next two years or so, hopefully we'll get the funding and get those properties removed out of harms way. These are properties that have had repetitive loss due to flooding and, uh, certainly, as we continue, it seems like annually to get more hits, some major storms, we want to get these folks out of harms way. Um, another item, especially those of you that are north of the river, um, Piedmont Natural Gas, you may well know has a, a current gas line that extends from Greenville to Washington. They're looking to replace that. The general location of this line is between the Tar River and US two sixty-four east. And they're looking to replace the line basically adjacent to where it currently stands. We've got one buyout property that we acquired back in, uh, after Hurricane Floyd that's effective, so, um, there are some financial considerations that go along with, uh, the expansion of the easement. So that's just another, uh, item north of the river that'll be occurring in the near future. Um, this is the easement area, just an example on our property. It'll be, uh, there's an existing thirty-foot easement, be expanded by twenty feet, and they'll put in the new, um, line within that new expanded area. Also, a, a couple of other items that, uh, aren't on your agenda. Typically, we report out what the commissioners have dealt with at their second meeting of a month before, uh, you at your meeting. The meeting schedule for the commissioners was altered some in the month of March. The commissioners will be meeting next week, so those items like the solar farm, uh, zoning ordinance amendment will be considered then, as well as the rezoning for the ER Lewis property on NC thirty-three east. So we'll report that out next month, Madam Chair. There's also in your package, the monthly report and some other, uh, articles for your leisurely reading. That's all we have for you tonight.
All right, thank you. You have a motion to adjourn? All right. Second. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.